Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to this Monday, October 30th, 2023, regular session of the Carmel Clay School Board. I'm calling this meeting to order. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Madam President. Everyone is here and accounted for.
Thank you.
Nice to see you. Dr. B.
Will you please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? All right. We will kind of now go into one of our main events of the evening, our presentation of our National Merit Semi-finalists, Dr. Ferris.
Dr. Barrisford, whoa, Dr. Barrisford, members of the board, it is with great pleasure and pride that we are back to present Carmel High School Class of 2024 National Merit Semi-finalists to you. Each year, over 1.5 million juniors take the preliminary SAT, which qualifies them for consideration in the National Merit Scholarship Program. Of these 1.5 million students, less than 1% are recognized as National Merit Semi-finalists as a result of their exemplary score on the PSAT. Once named a Semi-finalist, these students are invited to apply for finalist status and to compete for one of 2,500 scholarships worth $2,500 each. Semi-finalists who earn finalist status are also considered for corporate scholarships and merit scholarships at their chosen colleges and universities. Carmel High School is excited, ecstatic, you put the word in there, to share that we have 55 current seniors that have been named National Merit Semi-finalists. Unbelievable. Now, with that comes some additional work. So during the month of September, these 55 seniors, along with their CHS counselors, worked to complete the application for finalist consideration. This extensive application provided a more in-depth look, information about these very talented and multifaceted students, including academic and extracurricular accomplishments, a student essay, and a counselor letter. These seniors will learn of their status as a finalist in late January, and whether they have been awarded scholarships throughout the spring semester. Okay, I just want to say one more time, on behalf of the entire Carmel Clay, Carmel High School staff, and I say Clay in there because you all started somewhere, right? Elementary, middle, and high, everyone has played a part in this. Parents, family members, grandparents, you have played a tremendous part of this. So on behalf of our entire faculty and staff, we could not be more proud of each of you to recognize you and wish you best of luck as you complete this process. At this time, Alenda Stefan is going to come forward and read the names and present the class members of 2024 National Merit Semi-finalists. Thank you.
So as I read the names, we're going to celebrate with a single Carmel clap. So do this with me now. Okay, it is my distinct pleasure to present our Class of 2024 National Merit Semi-finalist students to you all. If you'll please come to the front, shake hands, get your certificate, and then stand at the front. That would be amazing. Yash Bargava. Elena Udyak. Shravan Chengalva. Rosalyn Chu. Charlie Corel. Lorna Ding. Miles Dunbar. George Emerson. Kyra Escobar. Alex Foster. Sri Krishna Ganeshan. Richard Gao. Sai Sritan Gudipati. Sahithi Hastavaram. Claire He. Akhmad Hamsi. Kevin Hu. Bolong Wong. Carolyn Gia. Sahal Joshi. Gudjan Kellinason. Samantha Lynn. Yi Chen Liu. Karma Maloney. Aaron Mansper, Aronson Mansberger. Amanda McDonald. Bargava Mortha. Milena Munson. Robert Neese. Elizabeth Palmer. Amanda Pan. Matthew Parabashi. Danya Pathangi. Anna Pennington. Nora Perkins. Paris Punatar. Arun Prohit. Eva Tao. David Rakovan. Barun Rao. Joey Sablehouse. Colin Santangelo. Sadesh Sangarkar. Genci Su. Sarah Suzant. Carson Zoteck. Angelina Tan. Hunjana Balaypali. Karthik Veriganda. Bingray Wang. Sydney White. Alexandra Yang. Charles Yuan. Nancy Jiang. And Oliver Zhu. Please join me in congratulating our Class of 2024 National Merit Semi-finalists.
Hey, turn around. Sorry, I can't help myself, but you know, you guys, I hope you understand that the reason we're taking all these pictures of it, because you have to get used to paparazzi because you're going to be so successful. And I want you to know that, don't take for granted, you are a group of the top scholars in the United States of America. And I want you to let that sink in a little bit, okay? I also want you to know that as a group from Carmel High School, there are more of you than many states have in their entire state at Carmel High School. We know that that happens because you work extremely hard. And I want to congratulate you on all the hard work that you've done. I also know that most of you have more than three or four things that you do in addition to studying. And the way that you are able to manage your time and your energy and your effort and taking the gifts that you have is something really, really special. And I just want you to know, we are extremely proud of you and what you've accomplished here. And then the other thing I want you to do is turn around the other way and tell your parents thank you, because they've put a lot into what's happening with you right now. So give them a hand, give your parents a hand, that'd be great. Okay, now you can go. Make sure you go out and get a picture taken in front of the backdrop out there, it's pretty awesome.
So we're going to take a short pause. If you guys are not staying for the rest of the meeting, you go ahead and exit, and there's opportunities to take individual photos out there.
It's like right next. So all it is, is you've got to be there 15 minutes early and sign in. You do the names up random, so that nobody gets involved. Everybody else gets to talk. So anytime you did, you just got to come at least 15 minutes early and sign in.
And if you come, everyone. All right. Thank you all. We're excited to see some people still in the audience. Thank you guys so much for being here. Thank you. Thanks for staying in. We will now, we have no public comment tonight. We will now move on to consent. Do I have a motion to approve consent?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor of approving consent, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. We'll now move on. We have a public hearing tonight. At this time, I need a motion to suspend the regular board meeting and open a public hearing regarding the lease between the Carmel Clay Building Corporation and Carmel Clay Schools issuance of first mortgage bonds. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Meeting suspended. Mr. McMichael, do you have any comments?
I do. So this is part of the process to obtain funding for our facility projects, in this case for the 2024 facility projects. The board examined and adopted a resolution on September the 11th approving the form of lease, which is this lease, because it hasn't changed. And this evening, we're asking, giving it the opportunity for the public to comment on the lease. And then after that, we'll ask the board to approve, actually approve the resolution confirming the lease. And so it's just part of that financing process. And in order to do that, we form a building corporation, and then this leasing process is a part of that obtaining funding.
Thank you. At this time, we'll offer members of the public an opportunity to make comments regarding these plans. If you would like to speak, please go up to the microphone right over there. All right, if there are no comments from members of the public, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye? Motion, move five to zero, we will now close. Okay, at this time, now we will move on to our action items for tonight. We will consider adopting a resolution confirming the lease and other actions. We will move on to 6.1, the confirming lease and other actions, Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. And again, this is just actually adopting the resolution that does confirm this lease.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Second?
Second.
Discussion. Okay, all those in favor of adopting the resolution confirming lease and other actions, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Motion carries five to zero. Our next item is the bus driver agreement, Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. Carmel Schools meets and discusses with our Bus Drivers Association and ultimately come to an agreement that you have in front of you. We're recommending approval of this agreement. Essentially, it's from the financial standpoint. Bus drivers are paid on a daily rate rather than an hourly rate. So when we're talking to bus drivers and discussing, it's not a percentage, but it's kind of big. We're aware of a percentage, but we add dollars to the daily rate. So in this case, we're adding $4.50 on a $120.50 daily rate in the first year and then $2.50 in the second year. So this increase approximates what other employees have received. In terms of non-financial, we added some language relative to elementary conference days and how bus drivers will be paid. And as you know, this is, I think, the second year, in recent years at least, that we've had conferences. And so we clarified that in the agreement. We also modified the personal business days to reflect language, I think it's identical language actually, to other classified employees. We also added a paragraph for religious holidays to provide for that as we have with other employees. And then we clarified kind of the process when, if we have closed school days. And so with that, I'd recommend your approval.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Jenny. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Louise. Discussion. Seeing there's no, oh Greg.
Yeah, just a point of clarification. It looks like the Bus Drivers Association ratified this agreement, so they're...
They did.
They're happy with it?
Yes. Yes.
Anything else? All right, do I have, I'll now take a vote. All those in favor of approving the attached agreement between the Board of School Trustees and the Carmel Clay School Bus Drivers Association, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Motion carries five to zero. We will now move on to adopt the 2024 Budgets, Capital Projects Plan and Bus Replacement Plan, Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. So our budgets and plans were presented to the school board initially, and then there was a public hearing, I believe, on October the 17th, and giving opportunity for the public to comment on the budgets and the plans. And now this is the final step in the process as far as the school board is concerned, to adopt the budget and budgets and the plan. And then upon adoption, we will forward these to the state because before they're actually put in place, they finally have to be approved by the state. And then they become effective January the 1st.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Thank you, Louise. Second?
Second.
Discussion. Greg?
Just a few points. This is my first year on the board and the first budget I've been asked to approve. And it's rather significant, it's over a quarter billion dollars. And I take that pretty seriously, so I've spent some time going through the budget. And as I've talked with, spent a number of hours with Roger and some of his staff and Tom. And I really appreciate your willingness to do that, and I learned a lot. Learned that, looking at the budget that I did and get some things right with my own assumptions, my own background. So I appreciate you helping me understand that. I would suggest that we offer training to new board members on how to read that and go through that. It might save you a little bit of time where we can be on the same footing. But like I said, I appreciate the time you spent with me on that. I noticed that we pretty much appropriate or rebudget to what the tax levies let us go up to. So we pretty much spend what is available to us. And so I'm trying to understand these things. I guess one comment would be that I'm probably not feeling confident enough to approve or disapprove. I've gone back and forth in my head trying to understand it. But I know a lot more than I did before. The, and I've said this before, I did a report on TIF a couple of months ago or so from the Carmel Redevelopment Committee. And noticed that we will be getting a lot more monies through property tax levies as TIFs expire and assessed values continue, hopefully continue to grow. So we will have just more and more money open up. And at some point, I think we're going to need to look at it, developing a budget from more of what might we need rather than what all is available because it could get to a point where we've got an awful lot of money out there that I think we need to be mindful of not spending everything just because it's there. And I'm not implying that we're doing that now, but it's just an observation that that's part of the budget process, that we spend what we can. The only other comment I would have is that, and I know it's the safety referendum, is about 45%, of that monies goes to SROs, so police officers. And I think that's, I'm glad we have that, we're very, have a lot of resources in this district. And I think having 21 police officers full-time is quite a phenomenal thing that we have to protect our children. But it is only 45% of the safety budget. I'm trying to get my hands around that. I know there's some other programs in there, mental health and equity inclusion programs, that we probably need to look at that down the road to see if that's, those are the kind of monies, I'm not saying we should or shouldn't, but it's an interesting observation that 45% of the safety budget goes for SROs and 55 goes for other programs. So those are just my observations. It's a complicated process. What Roger and his team go through is remarkable, and Tom too, trying to sort everything out. And looking at the monthly financial report, seems to come out pretty good at the end. So that's just a good footnote that you guys are doing quite well with your budgeting process. That's all I have.
Hey Greg, can you give us, you know, the team just a little more insight? So you said, I think you take pause at us spending what we have. Are you meaning allocating in the budget what we have access to? Is that what you mean when you say that?
If I'm understanding your question of my question right?
Yeah.
The, let's say we have $250 million of monies that are available through the referendums and the debt service and the operations fund and the state funding. We do plan to spend all that. So as an example, like with the operating, operations referendum, we have 19 cents for $100 assessed values. And we plan to spend that. I mean, we budget to that.
What are you saying is the alternative? What, if we didn't spend it, what are you suggesting would be either a better use? Or like, what are you proposing to the team we might consider doing with what we don't spend?
I guess I'm saying that particularly looking forward as we grow and as TIF districts expire and we get the full benefit of the value of the properties, that we will very likely have a windfall of money. And if we could, if we continued to budget like this, we would continue just to follow where that budget, where the allowable revenue would go. And at some point, I think we need to look at, like, for example, with the operating referendum, it's 19 cents. We can spend up to 19 cents. So we could spend less than 19 cents. So I'm just saying that we need to not continue to ride it up just because we can ride it up. We should be fiscally astute as to what do we really need versus what can we spend?
If I could make just a couple...
Yeah, I was gonna...
Before you get too far down the road, because the budget is, we don't use the budget for spending, planning. And that's not intuitive because it seems like, well, now's the budget and so we should decide what we're going to do. For the most part, and particularly the education fund and the operating referendum, for the most part, our budget is reflecting decisions that the board has already made. So for example, with salary and benefits, we've already decided what increase in salaries we're going to give. And at this point in time, all of our teachers and all of our employees that have contracts, they're already out there. So for the first six months, we're going to pay them. And so part of the budgeting process is reflecting what's it going to cost to cover that expense. Now, we're guessing in the second half because the way the money flows, we don't actually know what we're going to receive, you know, the last half of '24 until we know what the enrollment is. And so, and sometimes you don't even have a formula. During the, with a biennium, we happen to have a formula at this time. But what I would emphasize is, is we're not determining here in the summer and in the fall that we're going to spend up to the revenue. When we make recommendations for salary increases, you know, we're projecting how much revenue is available. Now, to that extent, we could have conversations, say, well, this is the max. And as Greg has noted, we typically are, the reason we have an operating referendum is because we don't feel we have enough money to begin with. So we've been a long way from feeling like we had excess money. Now, things change and TIF and so forth will affect, you know, that revenue stream in the future. But the point I would make is, is that for the most part, everything in the budget is a reflection of decisions already made, never wanted. And so in terms of timing, the time to discuss, you know, tax rates and whether we would go to the maximum or go less, it'd be made back here before how we're going to spend the money is made. So if we said, well, you know, we have, this is enough for salary increases, but we have more than that for whatever the reasons, then certainly, you know, you would bring it down. Usually, we're struggling with, we don't have enough money. That's been more of a challenge than the latter. And so, but the point I'm trying to emphasize is, is now's not when we would look at whether we're going to tax to the max or take all the money. So we don't, we don't get the money, we're not deciding now to spend all the money. We've decided that, you know, when we made staffing decisions and when we made salary increase decisions primarily.
Does the substitute budget come out of there too?
Yes, all, pretty much all the expenses that you'll think of come out of these tax-supported budgets.
Okay. Oh yeah, I'm just trying to connect all the dots because I was thinking Greg was saying maybe there's the potential to spend less. And I'm just thinking about all of the things where we are at capacity and we want to spend more money to support certain positions and things. So that's why, I'm just trying to connect the dots, but I, I don't know. And then what did you mean Greg when you said the 55%, 45% on the SROs, but you're a little surprised that the other 55% would be on other things? Tell us more about your concern there.
On the safety referendum?
Yeah.
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 Yeah, that point was that the safety referendum, we spent about 45% of the budget on SROs, so 55% on other things. And it's, I'm not sure what the original wasn't here when the safety referendum was detailed out. So I don't know what the expectation was on spending on that.
Or do you have concern? Because I'm just trying to bubble that up. If you have concern on that 55%, just what are those?
Yeah, I'm not sure I'd say it's concern, it's just that I question that 45% is not even half of the safety referendum. And I was surprised it wasn't more than that. So I just, again, that's another thing I need to understand a little bit better.
Okay, so are you saying that the other 55% isn't safety-related? Or you're just saying you think you would be more, you would be supportive if it was 100% on SROs and not on other things that are safety-related?
Sounds more like an observation.
Yes, I'm just observing. And again, as I said, I'm being new to the board, first time I've looked at these budgets. When I looked at the safety referendum, I was just surprised that 45% is for SROs, 55% is not. I don't know what the right balance would be. I haven't looked at the detail. I plan to get myself more in tune with that over the next year. And that's why I'm saying, now, this is a big budget, you know, quarter of a billion dollars, more than that. And my other point on the, what we spend up to is that, you know, the operating referendum is an eight-year commitment by the voters at 19, up to 19 cents. And my only point there, just to reiterate it, is that as we get further out, we're going to see assessed values for the money driven by property taxes going up quite a bit as commercial properties expire. So we will, we could have a windfall. And I just, it's an observation of, you know, if we just keep following with that same practice, we could have double the budget or some, you know, enormous amount.
Well, I hope so.
But this budget is only for 2024, correct? So what we are talking about in the decision we're making as a board tonight isn't regarding what might happen with TIFs.
Right.
Or anything else potentially with an increase or a windfall or whatever you want to call it. We are specifically talking about what we already know is the budget for 2024. That is the job of the five of us today, correct?
Yeah, so one of the things too is, so our funding comes from the state and they do it on a two-year basis. So every two years, they'll do the state budget and pass it. That kind, that money then comes down to us. And so we really can't think any farther. We can obviously long-term plan. But a few years ago, they changed the state budget where it drastically decreased. And it kind of set, public schools kind of in a spiral, which wasn't expected. So I think that we really try to be very conscious and plan for the, you know, the long-term future. We see that a lot in the bonds that we do for our facilities projects, how we long-term and try to keep the tax rate the same. And then in the shorter term, making sure. But to your point about the referendum, we've seen that a great example with the safety referendum where we were able to take up to five cents and we only took, was it three and a half?
Yes.
For the first part because we didn't need all the money. We're a not-for-profit organization, we can't be making any money. So it's definitely something where if we don't need it, we definitely will give it back. So, Kristen.
I just wanted to make a point on the 19 cents, the referendum that we know is going, the renewal is coming up. That the state of Indiana, and we all know that there is an unequal funding that they use right now for school districts. And so Carmel being the second lowest-funded school district in the state, we have to find funding in using the referendum in order to provide the quality of education that the community expects and that we need to be able to provide. And so that's, that's part of that, that, you know, using all of that 19 cents.
Yeah, and that's definitely been something that we've tried to educate people about, the referendum of, and, you know, the 25-ish million dollars that we'd have to cut, which equates to one in five teachers. So it's very, be a very big thing. So, thank you. So back kind of, okay, Jenny, Louise, any other discussion items for this? Okay. Thank you so much. Roger, thank you on path with the board for you and your team for taking the time to answer our questions and emails and meet with us and everything. You are a fountain of wisdom and reference, and we really appreciate your, your guys' time.
I appreciate the time, I get paid for this. I appreciate Greg's time and everybody else that take the time to try to understand this because I'm not, I don't know that I fully understand it after about 45 years in school administration. So it is complicated, it is a lot of money. And we absolutely should and continue to be fiscally responsible. And we always have needs and as my experience as educator is, is educators will, we'll spend all the money we get and we'll use it to good, you know, to good, for good, good for kids. At the same time, somebody, taxpayers have to pay for it and so forth. So we always are trying to balance those priorities.
Thank you so much. All right, any others? We'll now take this to vote. All those in favor of adopting the 2024 Budgets, Capital Projects Plan and Bus Replacement Plan, please signify by saying aye. All those who abstain?
Aye.
And that is four for yes, one abstaining. Motion carries.
Hey, before you jump to the next one, can I just make a quick comment?
Please.
I just wanted to acknowledge that I think this is Roger's 45th budget, that he is prepared and that we're very fortunate to have a man as talented as him and also his team that can go through this. To your point Greg, I took two school finance classes in my master's degree programming and each year, they taught me completely different things because the formula changes every two years, sometimes... because the formula changes every two years, sometimes even every year. They they do changes and then process. I think you learned that when you with your meeting with them, that different coding goes on. And so it's a it's a very complex process. And I know you've heard me say this before, but it's a zero-sum game. You have this much money and you have this many expenses. And uh budgets are put together pretty conservatively because you certainly don't want to come up short. But at the same time, you don't want to, you know, a bunch of extra money. And uh and that's where the talent of Mr. McMichael comes in because he's able to hit that sweet spot, uh, you know, year after year after year after year. And uh where you don't have an enormous amount of money and you certainly don't come up short. And uh so uh he's masterful in that and also in managing debt. And uh so we're very fortunate to have, you know, that caliber of uh of uh working for us for so many years. And uh so uh, I'm not done yet. You stay in the saddle there, buddy. But um, you know, that is uh finding that sweet spot and making sure that you're being responsible and and sensitive really to the the taxpayer is important. And uh and it is not an easy thing to explain because there's so many complexities to it. And uh we I've hired, you know, Kelly School of Business accounting people who struggle with why does the state do what the state does on this finances? And uh and the the answer to it is is once you get your degree, you need to come and you got to work in the school setting with people like Roger or and you have to go to the I S B, you know, the Indiana Board Business Officials Association. And uh as the rules change, you learn and learn, you're all cons- constantly learning because it's constantly changing. So it's a tough, tough, tough thing to do. But uh congratulations, Roger, on number forty-five. And uh thank you, board, for uh for adopting that budget.
And one more thing on that subject. So like Roger, you point out this has to, this goes to the state and they review it and approve it. And then we're audited also. Is that on the right?
We're all we're consist always audited now every year.
Okay, perfect. All right, thank you so much again for your time.
Thank you.
Might point out that the audit has been clean for like twenty years or something in a row.
Appreciate, I'm I'm glad, thank you. All right, we will now move on to um six point four, the resolution to transfer from the education fund to the operations fund, Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. So with the uh uh creation of the education fund, which replaced the general fund several years ago, at that time, the use of the education fund was narrowed pretty specifically to more or less classroom or almost in the cla- at the school at least expenses. And so things like custodians and utilities, uh, most everybody works in this building, were no longer permitted to be paid from the education fund, but were uh typically paid from the operations fund. However, um, the state continued to send the same money essentially. And so in so we we have about seventeen million dollars worth of those expenses that are we're now paying out of the operations fund. And so to have essentially the money has has to follow the expense because we don't have any more money over there. So so that's what this process is. It's it's uh it's it's money that's following those um non-direct instructional expenses to the educa- to the uh operating fund.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the transfer?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, please, oh, Greg?
Yeah, I'm I'm still trying to learn all this, right? So I'm going to have questions and uh and we've talked about this before, it's earlier meetings, that this um this is kind of remnant of that accounting period when we have the general fund, as you explained.
Yes.
And so this is a one-time thing to get it back in in a
No, every year. And we talked about this earlier in the year, uh, when we were talking about referendum because we had questions that when people looked at our referendum, they said, well, you said you were spending it on salary and benefits, but I see maintenance and things in there. And they were correct in that the first year we did this transfer because it was like everything was new and and for unless you happen to have a referendum or an operating referendum, this was the only choice. And so the second year, we it it occurred to us, that occurred to me, that um the use of an of the operating referendum has continued to have the broader definition as the general fund had prior to that. And so rather than it's really rather than going through the process of doing doing this transfer, we paid those expenses out of the operating referendum, which meant we kept the money in the education fund. So it didn't change, uh, and I've said before, it's it was a bookkeeping thing, but but not to minimize it because uh when people looked at our expenditures, although they apparently didn't look for the first four years because it wasn't until this re- renewal of our referendum came up that I I got a couple of questions. I still didn't get more than four or five, but but every question's important to me. And and every, you know, taxpayer's opinion is. And so um and and so they said, well, you know, I'm seeing these expenses. And so uh we certainly didn't want to mislead anybody because if I weren't there to explain, I'd come to the same conclusion. You said you're paying salary and benefits, but I see you're paying, you know, seventeen million dollars worth of things that are not education, not teachers certainly. And and they would be right, but lacking the the rest of the conversation, they would they would come to the wrong conclusion, really. So so my thinking then was we'll go back to doing this transfer. It's not that huge of a deal to transfer it. It just make it a lot clearer. And um and as I think you know, all of our, most of our bookkeeping's out on gateway as as the state's intent to be transparent. What they'll see in in beginning in twenty-four with the operating referendum, they'll see like one one or two line items that basically it'll be teacher's salary and benefits. Pretty clear, um, not any room for confusion, and that's what we want. But we'll do this every year that we have a referendum.
So so this allow us to
Or not a referendum, I'm sorry. We'll do it every year because of the change in the funds.
So this allow us to charge those operational expenses directly to the operations fund?
Yeah.
Instead of the education fund like we saw this last year?
You know, we didn't see it last year. Once they created the education fund, we're prohibited from paying those expenses from the education fund. So the so then if it's not there, where is it at? Because we, you know, when they change the fund, we still need custodians. We still have to pay you, we still have utility bills and so forth. And so um so the answer is the the alternative is the second fund that was created, which is the operations fund. And so that's that's where we're paying. It was only be the coincidence that we are one of about fifty-five school districts out of three hundred districts that had an operating referendum. Other other districts, the only choice they have is to pay them out. They're 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 required to pay them out of the operations fund or not have them, one of the two. So so assuming we're going to have utilities and custodians and central office staff and so forth, that's the only choice. And so this um is the only really the only alternative in order to have the money to cover it, cover, continue to cover those expenses.
And I was trying to think of what it was. It's House Bill ten oh nine, it says right here. That's kind of
That's right.
Just one last question. The um in the in the budget book, it listed that amount, it showed that transfer.
Yes.
But but it was a different amount off by almost a million versus uh on the um on this uh resolution we're going to approve tonight. Do you know what the difference?
I don't off the top of my head, no. I can I can follow up and and see. I I do know that the um, I mean, the budget process starts in June. And so it could be a timing issue as to to um when 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 we were putting the budget together. And keep in mind that the budget um, we the budget is is approved appropriations. And so all that means is is that we have to have a pro- the appropriation process and the approval and of of appropriation is the authority to spend the revenue. So it's not, it's not, it's the revenue is what we're spending. It's the appropriation is giving us authority to spend it. And you you'll you see that when we build, you know, with construction projects where we have to appropriate those bond funds because we sell the bonds, but you can't use the money unless it's been appropriated, which is just approval to spend it.
Which comes to us.
Which comes to you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, we'll now take a vote. All those in favor of approving the resolution to transfer from the education fund to the operation fund, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five to zero. All right, we will now move on to six. It's the Mr. McMichael Show.
That's what I was thinking.
Six point five, the rainy day fund.
Thank you. For some time, probably at least in the last year or so, we've had conversation about increasing um over time our our op- our cash balance essentially uh and our reserves. For years, Carmel has maintained a minimum, a goal is a minimum cash balance of eight percent. But that was, that's a minimum, not a maximum, although we've kind of treated it as a maximum. And we'd like to get that up to closer to twelve percent. And so um each one percent's about one and a half million dollars, just to kind of put that in perspective. And so last year, we our education and uh operating fund and refer and rainy and rainy day fund. And we're looking at those cash balance totally in those three funds. It uh every time we when we sell a bond issue, standard and pores would would prefer that we have a higher uh reserves. And uh so that's part of the reason for for increasing it a bit. I've always been of the philosophy, again, as some of the earlier discussion. I I've I've always, I think, been fairly conservative in a in terms of how much cash. But it just like at home, it is appropriate. It's kind of like our savings account. So it is appropriate to have some cash uh for unforeseen events. And and we've had some just in the last few years, pandemic being one of them. And um and so then it becomes a matter of how much. And so um and so uh it's been eight percent. We'd like to get it to twelve. We have uh some funds in our operation fund um that are 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 not encumbered, that is, are not specific uh to an expense that we've already committed to. And so uh we have from time to a couple of times, this will be a second or third time, I believe, that we've transferred some money from the operations fund to the rainy day fund. This is this is not a recurring process. When we get up to a level that we feel is sufficient, um, then then we'll no longer do that or need to do that. And so so that's what this is about.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the rainy day fund transfer of funds?
So moved.
Second? Thank you, discussion. Greg?
Yeah, uh, uh, so when we say twelve percent, you I think you alluded to it. I mean, to make sure I understand, you you're talking across the education fund and operations fund and and rainy day fund altogether? We want that aggregate to be twelve percent?
Yes.
Ah, okay.
Yes, and so la- and we we look at it in particular, uh, we watch it all the time. But but one of the key dates now is is June thirtieth because that's our, that's the end of our fiscal year. And so a year ago, um, in twenty-two, that um that was um about seven and a half million. And I'm sorry, seven and a half percent, not million. And um so we're a little under the eight percent, actually. And we've had discussion quite some time ago. We had some um kind of one-time expenses. I don't even recall what the specifics were, but that brought that, you know, a little bit lower. And so so that was also part of the plan was we anticipated kind of restoring that and then, you know, increasing it up to about more like twelve percent.
So so what would that number be approximately at this point?
Uh, I haven't done the math off the top of my head, but but it's uh our current budget's it was about a hundred and forty-five million, so twelve percent of that.
Okay. So so we're able to, oh, yeah, here's the question I've got. On the rainy day fund, that can be used for operation expenses and education expenses, depending on what our need might
Yeah, under the law, we you you can move up to ten ten percent of monies in other funds if they're not needed, if they're not encumbered. Of course, we're not, we we're not moving anywhere close to that, given the size of our funds. And once you, once it's in a rainy day fund, as the name implies, it can be used for virtually anything the board approves using it for. My advice has always been to a board that this is, again, like a savings account. So don't use it to to increase salaries or any other recurring expenses. But if you have a pandemic and and um you decide you want to give a stipend to all of our, all of your employees in recognition of the challenges that they've met, which is what we did, uh, that was two million dollars. And and so that's an example. It's a hopefully a one-time uh expense. We don't plan on having pandemics regularly. And uh and even if you did, it was a stipend, not not like a salary increase. And so so uh the best, you only use it for truly what you most people would understand to be a rainy day. Several years ago, we had about a four million dollar shortfall from the state in about two thousand and ten. That's when we started the referendum process, by the way, um, just shortly after that. That would be an example. And because they told us in December that January, the next year, which started a month later, you're you're going to come up short about four, in our case, about four, four and a half million dollars. So if we had no reserves, you can see the problem with that. So um but you can use it for virtually anything the board chooses to and approves using it for.
So once it's in the rainy day, is there any kind of, uh, like earlier in the week you gave or last week, you gave me a copy of the, what I would call the chart of accounts?
Yes, yeah.
And and that was really helpful, understanding the budget and the different line items that we have in there. On the rainy day, is there a similar um document that would say what can and how it can and cannot be used?
No, because what what we gave you is 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 the chart of accounts. It's like all the account numbers and how the money is categorized. And that that chart of accounts applies to all the funds, including the rainy day fund. Probably the use of the rainy day, as I said, it's it's virtually can be used for, I don't can't think really of anything it can be used for as long as the board approves it. And I think it's really that simple. It's probably more a matter of Googling it than it is like a document per se.
Okay. So so when expense comes up, that requires us to have to
Well, no, the years ago, the board adopted a resolution. I don't remember, I can't quote what it says specifically, but there we started by adopting a resolution that that um it basically said in so many words, it more or less, it was like, it was one of those, we can use it for this, this and this and and anything else that the board approved. So so it was it was that broad. And um but but keep in mind, like what I said earlier, you cannot use rainy day funds unless you first appropriate them. So our routine would be is if we had something like the pandemic stipend, we would come and and recommend consideration of that expense. And then in that case, and we would might, in that case, we said, and we would use recommend using rainy day funds. And 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 then if the if that was supported, then and it wasn't appropriated, then we would say, but and now you'll need to go through this appropriation process, which also, by the way, requires a public hearing to give opportunity for the public to to offer their opinion on all that.
Is there a threshold on that amount? Like, let's say you needed five thousand dollars.
No, no threshold.
Okay.
The threat, I mean, in terms, there's not a threshold as to how much money you can put in a rainy day fund. And again, um, our rainy day fund is minimal compared to any number of school districts I could direct you to. Because again, I have felt that that it's appropriate to have some savings. But uh maybe a month or two even, sometimes people will look at it like that. At eight percent, it's more coincidental that if you, you know, take one month out of twelve. And so uh but but it's not, I don't, I've not felt it appropriate to just have unlimited amounts of cash, just millions and millions of dollars, just kind of sitting in the bank just in case. Now, sometimes, just like at home, you can you can be in hindsight too conservative. If if it runs out, then you'll you'll conclude that you wished you had more. But, you know, so far in my career, I haven't run out. And since there's been a rainy day fund and and so it's all kind of, you know, it's worked out okay. And and uh luck would have it that that could change. But but I feel that we're we, you know, the the twelve percent is is quite adequate. It's also a part of our size. If we were, if this were a very small school district, you know, ten percent of, you know, a budget that's a tenth our size is, you know, obviously a lot less dollars than when you take a percentage of of the budgets that are our size. So that plays into it as well.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, Roger, I know this is your five hundred and seventy-two for you, but it's seven for me, and I still feel that I'm learning something all the time. So I appreciate you answering our questions and all of those. All right, I will now take a vote. All those in favor of approving the transfer of funds to the rainy day, please signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries five to zero. All right, we're going to move to change orders. We'll vote on these separately, Roger, but I do want to offer you the opportunity, if you want to speak on them all, like bam bam bam.
These are relatively small, but, you know, Um, these are relatively small, but, you know, again, they're all important. The first one's fifteen hundred dollars, and, and all of them have the, the, what they're about and so forth. The largest referendum, I believe, is probably the, the, the interior finishes at the wellness center. And, and what that reflects is, is we continue to grow. And so we, we've found it necessary to, to reconfigure some things within the, within the space to provide more office space and for the employees and so forth. And then as a part of that, we also changed out the finishes on, on the walls and the flooring. And so, and we're, and we're doing this through this, through a change order. We had a project there that included, the big part of the project was we, we replaced the mechanical system. That was several hundred thousand dollars. So relative to that, this is a small portion of the total that we spent there. But, but that's what, that, that's what this one's about. And then there, there's a couple where they have, there are some reimbursements or whatever, so the, the final amount is a little bit less. But for the most part, that's what they're about.
Okay, thank you. I want to take a motion to approve change orders to the Carmel High School Performing Arts Center addition and renovations. Do I have a motion to approve? Thank you, do I have a second? Thank you, Kristen, discussion. All right, all those in favor of approving the change orders for the Carmel High School Performing Arts Center addition and renovations, please signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries five to zero. We will now move on to six point seven, change orders for the Carmel High School auditorium addition and existing auditorium renovations. Do I have a motion to approve? Do you have a second? Thank you, Louise, discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries five to zero. We will now move on to our final change order, the C L L C interior finishes remodel. Do I have a motion to approve? Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you, Louise, discussion. All right, all those in favor of approving the C L L C interior finishes remodel, please signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
All right, I think you're off the hook for the rest of the night, Mr. Mc.
Yeah.
Oh, they're mine. All right. Okay. Exciting part. All right, we will now move on to the program of studies, course changes. Dr. Dudley.
It's so hard to follow, Mr. Rick Michael. So this evening, I bring to you for a recommendation to approve our two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five program of studies for the high school. At our last regular board meeting, I shared with you all of the changes that our curriculum advisory committee went through and looked at the changes and made suggestions to Dr. Ferris, myself, and Mrs. Peel as well for the changes. And I just wanted to share with you, this, these changes really are in line with our strategic plan initiative. So one of our big topics under student learning is to ensure all students have rigorous and differentiated learning opportunities with an enhanced focus on literacy, mathematics, and career technical programming to meet the individual needs and have the necessary skills and abilities to be college and career ready. And these changes here really help support those areas in literacy, math, as well as our career and technical education. So we recommend that you approve those changes.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve? Thank you, a second? Thank you, Louise, discussion. Okay, all those in favor of approving the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five program of studies course changes, please signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries five to zero. All right, we'll now move on to the discussion portion of our meeting. This will be me. We, Colleen is going to show our school board meeting dates for two thousand and twenty-four, which is insane, that, that is where we are. We will bring this back to a vote at a, a future board meeting. Colleen and I, mainly Colleen, scoured, trying to make sure that we didn't go over any major holidays, minor holidays, really kind of looking at different things. So we have some adjustments where there are going to be some meetings on a Tuesday, or, so you will see those notated with the asterisks there. You also will notice that we have, usually have a workshop in the month of April due to the solar eclipse and the changing of spring break and kind of some different holidays that were around the April timeframe. We really just couldn't find a date that really adequately worked. So we're not going to do a workshop in April. But we're, we've kind of already made some plans on how we're going to adapt for that with the topic that was slated for April. We're just going to move it to an earlier month. So any questions on this? Okay, we will bring this back to a later meeting, like I said, for a vote. And as you, you all have a copy of this, as you review it, if there's anything that comes up, or if you see anything that we may have missed, just let us know. Okay, we'll now move on to reports. Dr. Dudley.
Well, thank you. So this evening, I'm going to share with you some student achievement data as measured by ILEARN, IREAD, and also SAT. And so let's begin with ILEARN. And just to remind everybody, ILEARN is a summative accountability assessment for our students in grades three through eight. It's an online computer adaptive assessment designed to measure the student's proficiency of the Indiana academic standards. And so what a computer adaptive assessment is, is that it looks at, when the students answer the questions on ILEARN, his or her response helps to determine the next question that the students will get. So the difficulty increases or decreases based on the student's skills, and it provides a better measure of where the student is in lines with proficiency to the standards. So it lets us know, have they mastered that standard, or are they approaching that? And if they are approaching that standard, how close are they to approaching that? Or are they significantly above that standard? And so that's, that computer adaptive. So our, this, ILEARN changed to that a couple of years ago. Our students also take computer adaptive assessments when they take N W E A assessments as well. And so that technology is out there and helps us to get a better measure. So let's look at, this slide shows us the two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three ILEARN English Language Arts proficiency for our students in Carmel Clay Schools as it's compared to the state. So as you can see, that Carmel Clay Schools has an average of about twenty-eight percent above the state average in each grade level. And when you look at Carmel Clay Schools compared to other similar-sized corporations, we are number one in the state as far as our scores on ILEARN English Language Arts and the proficiency. When you look at the, across the board for ELA, we've increased an average of two percent over the past three years. So comparing these results to our twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-one results, we've increased in English Language Arts for all of our students an average of two percent. Another area in our strategic plan is to make sure that we're strengthening student engagement to close those achievement gaps by ensuring that our students have access to rigorous content and the support that they need. And so some of the areas, as we're looking at closing that achievement gap, some of our successes we're excited for, looking at, over those same three areas, or three years, from comparing twenty twenty-one to twenty-two, twenty-three, we saw a six point one percent increase in proficiency of our Black students, a four point four percent increase in proficiency of our Hispanic students, three point four percent increase in proficiency of our low socioeconomic students, a four percent increase in our multi-language learners. And also, we look at how, how well are our intervention programs going? So the, the strength of our intervention programs. So looking at our students that did not, were not proficient in two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two, and those students that moved to proficiency in twenty-two, twenty-three, we had thirty percent of our students that were not proficient, and then they moved to proficiency that next year. And that, so that points to the strength of the interventions that we're providing for our students. That thirty percent increase of those students, thirty percent of them increased to proficiency or above proficiency. And again, comparing us to similar-sized corporations, that's number one in the state as we look at the strength of the interventions for ELA. So moving on, looking at our math proficiency as measured on ILEARN, you can see this is our two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three ILEARN math proficiency, comparing our proficiency to the average proficiency of all other students in the state of Indiana. And you can see we're an average of thirty percent above the state in each of our grade levels. And again, that puts us at number one as we compare ourselves to other similar-sized corporations in the state of Indiana. And again, looking at the average across all of the grade levels over the past three years, we're seeing an average of four percent increase in math proficiency over those three years. And then breaking down into our different student achievement groups, we're seeing an average of, or an eight point three percent increase for our Black students, which is quite above the average, a nine percent increase in proficiency of our Hispanic students, a three point six percent increase in proficiency for our low socioeconomic students, a five point four percent increase in proficiency of our special education students. And then when we look at the strength of our intervention programs in math, for all of the students in two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two that were not proficient, that moved to proficiency or above proficiency in twenty-two, twenty-three, sixteen point two percent of those students moved in there. So you can see our math interventions are not quite as strong as our ELA interventions. We'll need to continue to work on that. But when you compare us in the strength of our interventions to all other similar-sized corporations, again, we're number one in the state of Indiana on those intervention programs. So another area that our students are measured on is they participate, our third-grade students participate in the IREAD assessment. And the IREAD assessment is designed to measure foundational reading skills based on the Indiana academic standards through grade three. So all of our grade three students participate in this. And you can see that we are twelve point four percent above the state in the IREAD results of our students being proficient on this assessment. And this is, again, puts us at number one compared to other similar-sized corporations in the state. And then looking at our different student groups, we've increased, for all of our students, we've increased three point four percent over the past three years. So comparing this back over the past three years, we are seeing an increase for proficiency. And then we see a fourteen point six proficiency increase for our Black students, fifteen point one percent proficiency of our Hispanic students, and a twelve point four increase in proficiency of our free and reduced lunch students. So we're excited about seeing the, closing that achievement gap, because we definitely want our student groups that, we see those achievement gaps. We want to see them outperform the average, and we are seeing that, and we're continuing to work on those pieces. So another assessment, our students, our eleventh-grade students in the spring participate in SAT, and it's SAT School Day. So many of our students take SAT multiple times, usually on a Saturday. They take it at Carmel High School, or they might take it at another testing center for SAT. But in two thousand and twenty-two, the state eliminated I-Step for our high school students, and they replaced it for the federal accountability, they replaced it with SAT, the Student Day. So the students, eleventh-grade students take SAT, and it fulfills the federal accountability. And then students also may use these scores to fulfill some of the buckets for their graduation pathways. They can use the scores for the SAT, the eleventh-grade SAT that they take. And so looking at our SAT for our scores, our student scores compared to the state, in the evidence-based reading and writing, that's the E B R W, which you might have wondered what that was, that is, we are thirty-three point five percent above the state. And again, that we're number one as compared to other similar-sized corporations. And then in math, we are thirty-nine point four percent above the state in math. And again, we're number one as compared to similar-sized corporations. We don't have three years of data since we just started SAT in two thousand and twenty-two. So I didn't have the comparisons of where did we grow over the last three years, looking at this data. So with that, what questions might you have?
Well, first of all, I want to thank you for this information, and I also want to thank you for taking the feedback that we've presented to you prior because you provided data of which questions I think we probably would have answered anyway. So thank you for, for listening in past conversations. With that, I will pass it to the board for any questions. Yeah, Penny?
So for the ninety-three point four percent rate on the third-grade IREAD, does that include children with the IEP, with IEPs, or are they excluded from taking IREAD? I can't recall.
No, all students are required to take IREAD. There is, what you may be referring to is a good cause exemption, where students take IREAD and certain students that have an IEP or possibly an ILP could, could receive a good cause exemption. It's not an automatic, they, they have a case conference committee that looks at it to determine, is this the appropriate place? But that ninety-three point four percent includes all students. When you do have a good cause exemption, it's counted as a fail. And so those students are still in this ninety-three point four.
So is there, was there, these numbers are true numbers, not that there's more people with exemptions?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Louise?
Thank you for the overview, and I'm excited about the percentage of minority students or students that are not native speakers or are special education students. The percentage of students being impacted positively by interventions is, you know, increasing, so I like that. I do have a couple of questions. Can you speak to the intervention strategy or how we go about interventions?
Sure, sure. So one of the pieces, when we look at for our literacy interventions, we want to, to start, and also for math as well, start as soon as possible. So we've done a lot of work and through, and we've shared with you different areas with assessments for our, looking at students that might have reading deficiencies. And we screen all of our students in kindergarten, first, and second grade to determine, do they have some needs in certain areas? So that we can be very targeted and very focused. So we first start with the foundational skills with those interventions. And so one of the pieces we have in, in our board, in our board workshop in November, you're going to learn more about foundations, which is a program for all of our students K through three. But we have students that still need some more time with those foundational skills. So those students may have an additional dose of instruction from a reading intervention teacher. It could be an additional dose within the regular classroom from their classroom teacher. And then also with a reading intervention teacher where they can push into the classroom, or it could be an additional pull-out group. So we want to look at our students first, the earlier the better, because we can catch them up much quicker for that piece. But then we still have students that are in the upper grades and then going into middle school as well as high school as far as that may have still needs in the area of reading, the foundational skills, or the reading comprehension skills. And so finding those students and what those interventions they might need. Some of these students may have an IEP, and so they get specific interventions in their, during their basic skills times in an IEP. But some students are not necessarily, do not have an IEP, or even, they might not be a second language and MLL student. And so those students might meet with a reading intervention teacher, they may meet with a, another teacher that we found room in their schedule to have that intervention time at the middle school. We have our core plus time where we can push in and do some intervention time during that time as well for both our literacy as well as our math. And so our key is, we really want to try to catch them as soon as possible, but then- But then we don't, you know, if they're not, still not getting it, we're still looking at what those interventions look like. So some of these interventions may be a very specific intervention where we're looking at a program such as one, one that we use with our students in fourth grade all the way through high school is Just Words, which aligns with the multisensory foundational skills that they might have in kindergarten, first and second grade. But it's at an appropriate level for the interest level of our older students. And this program actually goes all the way through adults. It could be that it's an intervention that's very specific to a skill where the student just needs a little bit extra time on that very specific skill. They may meet with the teacher maybe for, you know, a three week period and then they're released from that intervention. The goal is to help to meet the deficit and then get them back into the regular class. Because the other piece that we kind of struggle with, especially as they get older, is they have a lot going on. They're in, you know, during Core Plus or during SSRT at the high school, they're also in different clubs that meet at that time and they might need other supports that they need to go to. So figuring out how you find the time is always a puzzle. But we sit down and we look at, okay, how can we make it work for this student? And then make that work.
Okay, thank you. Couple more pieces. Can we get the stats for the breakdown for those groups? Can you share those for the pass rates for the ones that we had up there? I'd like to see how that spread is happening. And then I think, didn't we talk about having a dashboard where we could see and pull some of this data and kind of see trends over time? Like out of view, didn't we talk about maybe creating a dashboard? Do you remember that?
I know we talked not too long ago, we talked about having kind of a, not a dashboard per se, but a tool that we're looking at kids that might be falling through the cracks. And I know Dr. Bearsford, we've been working with technology and Dr. Bearsford's also been, you know, sharing some things that he would like to see there on that dashboard and our technology is working on developing that. Not as far as a dashboard for public viewing, but this would be for our staff.
Right, right. So yeah, I just wanted to see if we were making progress with that because I think it would be great to be able to kind of track how we're doing with this, with some of the data you put there. And then do we have, in looking at the pass rate and the gap for the state and for us, do we have any kind of understanding on why there's still such a, a gap in the pass rate for like ELA and math for students? I think it was, it wasn't the SAT. It was a couple of slides before that, it might have been, what were the other two? ILEARN, I think it was ILEARN and...
Read in.
Yeah, 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 ILEARN for math and ELA, right? Because so, you know, if we look at this one right here, it's still, you know, sixty-five percent, sixty-five, sixteen. I still think thirty, forty percent at times, like, man, what is the cause? Like what do, have we been able to kind of nail down what's happening with our students? Because we teach, our teachers are excellent, right? And we also recognize everybody's not an awesome test, test taker. So do we think it's a tool? Do we think, do we know? And if we don't know, it's okay. I'm just asking.
Well, so one of the reasons why we need to compare it to all other students in the state is because there's not a, a perfect assessment out there. And so as the state has changed the assessment, one of the other pieces, the state also has, just this past year, where I shared with you a couple of board meetings ago, the state has changed or identified essential standards and eliminated standards. So sometimes you don't always have a direct match of, here are the standards, the, the taught curriculum and then the assessed curriculum. Because it takes time to, you know, when the state changes it, then we have to then provide that professional development and say, okay, let's change these standards that we need to focus on in the state. And we're going to see that again at the end of this year when we take ILEARN again. Because ILEARN is still going to be assessing all of the standards, all of the state standards. However, this year, the state eliminated some of those standards and then they said, these are the essential standards. So we're, we're focusing on those essential standards. But even, they'll be assessed on all of those standards. So there's not, there's not ever a perfect piece. But our goal is always to drill down and look at, not only use this, because this is one dipstick of time, that student, you know, we might have had a student that wasn't feeling well that day or what have you. There, so, but it's, this is one measure. And then our key is to look at not just this, but other measures that we have for the student to make sure that we're providing the very best instruction. So this, this is one.
I was going to ask, that, that with that, I was, I wonder if there was any correlation in performance of like NWEA, if you compare it to performance in ILEARN or not?
Yeah. And so yes, we do have correlation studies with NWEA where in, we give NWA in the fall and then also in the winter. And we look, use that data because there's a correlation to say, they predict if they'll be proficient or not and in what areas might they need to work on. And so we really drill down into that data to say, okay, where do we need to catch students before they get to that ILEARN? And then the state also will be changing ILEARN where they'll have through course assessments. They'll be coming, not this year, but they'll pilot them next year and then they'll go into effect for everybody the year after. And so the students will take smaller assessments across the course of the year and then they'll take a smaller, supposedly a smaller summative assessment. We'll have to see, that's what they've proposed. We've not seen those pieces. But so we use our NWA. We also use making sure that how are we aligning our curriculum to what our students are learning? And then how are we assessing them with the classroom assessments based on the standards? And so it's all that alignment and then just continuing with providing that professional development for our teachers and having our teachers work together in professional learning communities to plan that instruction and to really look at, okay, here are the standards and then how do we drill down to, here's the standards, here's the learning intentions and here's the success criteria of how we know that we'll be successful. And then setting up our own assessments based on that success criteria. So it's get, it's making sure that we have that alignment. And that's an ongoing piece that we continue to work on.
Because we have, don't, we have a newer math program, right? That's coming or it's, we just implemented?
We, we, this year we have Reveal Math, which after seventeen years, we had everyday math at the elementary. And then we had some different math programs at the middle school and the high school. And we have Reveal Math now that has been implemented in elementary, middle school, as well as our algebra and our algebra two classes at the high school.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, you know, how that could impact performance?
And sometimes you see an implementation dip where you do have a new program and you might see a dip in that implementation. Not always, but there could be times that you do.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Jenny? So can you go to the math screen? So I'm just wondering, and this is just your insights into the proficiency in third grade that although we are still maintaining a similar level across, based on the state scores, where intuitively what you see that dip is caused by? Is that with sixty percent, as Louise says, I mean, it, you know, which is great. We're above the state. I don't know. You know, our state doesn't rank that high across other states. But how, what, what do you think that's, accounts for that?
So are you asking from third grade to eighth grade?
Yeah, is it just because it's, it's more difficult math? We're testing a different population of students?
Well, so you, as you can see, our, you know, we start in, in third grade at eighty point eight percent. And then as you noted, we go down to sixty point nine percent. But the trajectory is also, it, it follows the same pattern that the state follows.
Right.
So in that case, if, if we were seeing a different pattern, then I would say that, you know, oh, what, what's out of line there? But because it follows that same pattern, the, the state also goes down from third grade to eighth grade, it, it goes back to the alignment of the assessment. I would say it's where it's, you know, our, what, what's happening in, you know, sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade and the assessment and the difficulty possibly of the assessment of why you're seeing that trend, that downward trend.
It's just reflective of the more difficult math that they're doing at that grade?
I mean, or the, or the...
Test.
Or the test is not maybe in alignment exactly with the standards.
I think that's one thing I found interesting because I think if you, if you show this chart with no context, then you're, especially on the reading one, you're going to be like, what is so great about sixty-seven percent? Or what, why are you bragging about sixty-nine point five? But I think it's, I mean, if, if you think back to, you know, grade on the curve, if the top one percent of schools are getting a sixty-nine or sixty-six percent, then I mean, it kind of goes back to like, how great can this test be? So I think it's really something where I think it's important and I appreciate you sharing that context with us because I think like if you just look at the numbers, that's nothing to write home about.
And I also want to, again, echo what my colleagues have said. I really appreciate you showing that those gains that some of our populations have made because that's so important to the overall success. We so often continue to see the brightest of the bright and the highest of the highest. But we have sixteen thousand students here and all of their development is important and critical to how our city functions, how our families functions. And so we appreciate that and we always welcome more of that type of feedback. So thank you.
Yeah, and it, it's definitely, we want to make sure we take our students from where they're at and we move all of our students forward and not, you know, not just focus on the highest of the high, but we're moving all of our students so that they all can be successful.
Kristen? Thank you so much for this. It was really interesting just seeing all the data. And I just wanted to reiterate something, like, it's just a feeling I've had for a long time that this is a snapshot of one day or a couple of days in a child's life. And so while we have to have these scores, the state requires that we do, the, the classroom teachers really know our students and know what they need to work on and what they're capable of, more so than this, this snapshot. So this gives us a little bit of information. But our teachers, we entrust them to, to know more of what's, what's needed.
Right, right. And it, yeah, it, like you said, it's just, it's one day in time. And it, it's, it's important information, but we also need to make sure that we're lining that up with other information that we have in that day-to-day is probably the most important.
All right, Greg?
Yeah, thank you for this, Amy. It's really enlightening. And I'm glad to see the, bringing up the, those groups that are, were struggling more than, than others to close that gap, so to speak. Have you looked at this by school to try to see, you know, this is aggregated by the district? And I know we've got a lot of schools. And when I was looking at it earlier this year, I noticed that, like for example, Creekside Middle School is, I think this is, I didn't make a note here. I think it's combined ELA and math is, is almost seventy-two percent proficient. But when I look at Clay, it's fifty percent. In Carmel Middle, it's, it's forty-seven point six. So those, that's quite a differential between those three middle schools, particularly, you know, the one that's really standing out is, is Creekside. Do you have any thoughts on why that's so different?
So for all of our schools, our schools all dig into all of this data and we look at it, at the district, we look at it with our principals and really drill down in that data. And then that's what drives the school improvement goals in each of the specific programs. And so when you look across the three middle schools, as you shared, we have Creekside that their achievement is much higher than our other two. And then, but you also then need to look at the, all of other students that make up the different classes. So at Creekside, we have the lowest percentage of our free and reduced lunch population. All three of our schools actually have, we are getting more and more MLL students at all three of our schools. However, when you look at the level of our MLL students, where level one would be a student that speaks no English at all to a level five student that speaks, they're proficient in English, but their first language was not English. Creekside has about the same number of MLL students as the other two schools. However, their, most of their MLL students are at that level four or five, where at our Carmel Elementary and Clay, we have a much higher percentage of MLL students that are a level one or two. So they speak very little English. And so when, you, you just have to look at the individual populations of the different groups and then determine, okay, how are we going to specifically meet the needs? Because we have to look at what, what, what do these students need? And then how will we move them forward? So just looking at it, just as a, well, Creekside must be a much better school than Clay, that it's not, you're not comparing apples to apples there.
Can I ask a quick question, Greg? Good question to that. So would it be possible for us, you know, I'm glad Greg was pointing that out? Like, do we have a triage plan? Do we have, you know, something that we are putting in the works to kind of lean in, investigate and come up with a plan? And could you report back on that kind of thing? Because we would love to know that.
So those plans are all of our school improvement plans and we do that every single year where we've drilled down and look at our data. For e, e, each school does this exercise where they drill down and then they make very specific supports in place based on their needs. We also look at resources. So resources at the different schools, like for example, when we have our higher population of our MLL students, we have different types of resources at Clay than we do at Creekside. Or we have different types of resources at Carmel Elementary than we do at College Wood Elementary. And so it, it, it looks at all of those pieces of what, what are the needs? And then how, how are we going to put plans in place? So each school develops their own school improvement plan, just like the district creates a strategic plan. They develop a school improvement plan that aligns with our district's strategic plan to make sure that we're focusing on the needs of the students at that school. And then we look at what are the resources that are needed and then how do we align that? And then how do we then, we start with the data to determine the needs and then we also use those benchmark data pieces to determine, how did we do? How are we, how close are we getting to that goal? And again, we use this data as one piece and then there's other data forms that we use as well. But we look at, you know, one piece that we use in their, our elementary is in our K through three, we have the early literacy data, as I explained, that we're assessing every single student, kindergarten, first, second grade and looking at any student that might need some very specific interventions or needs there. And then we also have in, we have foundations data where our students are taking assessments all along the way. And then at our schools, our principals and our teachers pull that data out every, you know, typically monthly or every other week, depending on how much the data turns over. They analyze that data and they call them, they have data days. So the teachers are working as a professional learning community. They're looking at the data, they're saying, okay, which students need what interventions? Which do we need to maybe add a little more to? Which students can we stop working with? And that's an ongoing process that we have at all of our schools as we're looking at those individual students to move them forward.
That's good to know. I just wonder if our team would want to have more visibility to what we're doing though and the progress we're making. If, if, if a school has forty-seven percent pass rate, like I, I want to know how we're doing, what we're doing and how we're doing against that, you know, the next test or, I mean...
Yes, but remember, we just talked about how forty-seven percent pass rate isn't really like forty-seven percent.
Yeah, and, and I think that where, well, I'd have to go back to the data. But looking at, I think you might have been quoting both math and ELA, putting them together, maybe? Yeah. And so you want, you want to drill down and get finer tuned than that piece, not just... It tells you nothing that, you know, if it's a fifty percent pass rate of, it may not be the same kids that are passing both. So you really have to drill down and say, okay, who, who needs ELA? Who needs math? Who might need both? And then drill down even further into what are, the, this assessment assesses all of the standards, but that the data that we get, there are some strands that we get out of there that help us with the data. But again, we still need other pieces that help... But again, we still need other pieces that help us because this isn't going to be the be-all, end-all on developing an intervention or even, this looks more programmatically. So are, are we seeing a misalignment of what is, you know, here's the written curriculum that's based on the standards, the taught curriculum and the assessed curriculum? Are we seeing a misalignment there? You know, what are the possible causes for those areas? And so that's where you, that study goes on continuously at all of our schools to say, what, what are the causes of this? And then what are we going to do about it? And what might, and then how do we assess that and monitor that? And in some cases, how can we get better at trying something, looking at, monitoring it? And if it's not working, how do we adjust in flight? Because sometimes that's, it's harder to do that on the fly, but at the lowest level, it, you know, the smallest level, when you're looking at individual kids, it's easier to do that. When you're looking very programmatically at large groups of kids, it's more difficult to do that.
Yeah, and I think everything you say is making sense and I trust your team is, is doing. I think what some, one of the things our team talks about is what is the visibility we want to have to some of these pieces? And I mean, you know, we'll be here all night, right? I, I just, there is a lot to it, right? You can't just look at a score and then make assumptions. You could make assumptions, but they wouldn't be accurate and comprehensive. As a team, I think with some of this data, we wonder, we wonder how we can have better line of sight into a comprehensive view.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and, and then with our leadership responsibility, you know, understand the strategy to, to, to triage it and if we have thoughts and ideas, be able to contribute, right? You know, I, um.
So, so I'm wondering if, and I don't know if this is where you're going, but I'm wondering if maybe if a future workshop, it could be where, I think it would be impossible to have all fifteen schools to come in, you would be here forever. But maybe we pick a couple of different schools to come in and kind of share their process of how they drill down, if that would help. I don't know if that might be.
Could, could we also maybe, I think that, I understand having been in education and doing what I do, but I know, I, maybe there would be a, a need for the, the team to understand multi-language learners and kids who have, students who have IEPs and other students who get, you know, a multitude of services were the reasons why they're, they're not proficient on these assessments. And I think that would be, just because I have that knowledge doesn't mean I know the rest of you do. And I think maybe that would be a missing, do you feel like that's kind of a missing piece that, that maybe we're not understanding at some point? Not necessarily, I'm not putting this on you, but for us to understand.
We talked before with Dr. B about having a workshop that talks about school improvement plans, kind of those fill the gaps, kind of those things. So I think all of this could kind of be incorporated into that to give more, because I think I'm with you, Kristin, is, I think it's just because I've been on the board for so long that none of this is a surprise to me, but it doesn't mean it's, it's not new or surprising to you. And so I do think, and then it's all, same goes for the community, is making sure that they understand when we say what a school improvement plan is, that's not a scary thing. You know, so I think having a workshop that kind of talks about those different things and how do we, what is our plan going forward? How do we look at those kids that are in the middle that aren't on, you know, the very bottom and they aren't at the very top? So I think that we could maybe have a workshop that kind of covers that.
Sound good to you, Dr. B?
Yes, and I don't want to, you know, be the, you know, super optimist here, but I've never had a board meeting where on a single test measure, you know, we had what, four test measures here, three, four? I've never had achievement gap close at that rate, ever. And so what that tells me is the interventions are working. The, the only really appropriate use of a standardized test is to identify kids through multiple measures that need help and then figuring out what that intervention strategy is. And every time one of these tests is given, the very first thing that goes on is who had the highest score in the state and who had the second. And we want to, we want to compare schools based on, on test scores. And the same school districts are always at the top and the same ones are always at the bottom and, and finger pointing happens. And the teachers in all those schools are working just as hard and they are making sure that the kids in their classrooms grow. And what I think this says is that the processes that are in place and the interventions that are in place are working. But at the same time, when you, you know, we tend to look at numbers, especially like this, is that if you're a sixty, you're a failure, you know? And if you're a ninety or a better, you're an A. And so all the others, that is the grading scale on standardized tests. But the most important thing is that I will never support teaching to the test. I do not want our, our school district ever to be one that is focused on getting, you know, you know, on one test that we knock that out because all of our, our, our house here is built on kids getting the strength, the, the skills and being proficient and they grow along the way so that they're ready for the next level of challenge. And that whole point of it is to get them to their greatest level of challenge that they could handle. That's why I always talk about whenever we could be known and loved, we want to be challenged appropriately. And then when they get to that level, let's see if we can get to the next level and get to the next level. And, and that's what, I, I've never seen anything this good before, so I really appreciate you sharing all that. And, and, and just a reminder that we have kids from every race, from every ability or, like, I, I don't like the word disability, I like different abilities. We have kids across the board, socioeconomic, who are probably, we're standing here as some of the top, you know, scholars in the nation. So it's really about helping kids and getting, that need intervention, get them in there and keep them growing. And this says we're growing and I really appreciate the report tonight, Amy, it's outstanding.
Thank you.
Could I make one more comment?
Yeah.
The, on the school improvement plans, I noticed that in twenty-two to twenty-three, they're almost all focused on reading and math, but really a big, heavy emphasis on reading. And I'm trying to draw a conclusion, so I'm asking if that's true or not, that when I saw the iRead score here was much higher than it was the year before. Not much, it was, I think ninety percent across the district, now it's ninety-four point three, if I remember right. So it looks like there's a correlation to school improvement plan. Okay, we got, we got a problem. What are we going to do about it? These are, this is our objective, so to speak. And it seemed like it has a quick result. Is that fair to say that those school improvement plans from twenty-two, twenty-three probably had a rather immediate action or result to the iRead score?
So, yes and no. I mean, with the, when you're looking at the, the iRead, that's looking at our students, what their work from kindergarten through third grade and looking at those foundational pieces. So yes, I would say that focusing on the foundational literacy and also is looking at how are we catching them earlier is helping to improve that. And our goal there is we want to have, and obviously our goal is to have a hundred percent, but the state has set out goals to have ninety-five percent and then ninety-seven percent of all of our third graders being proficient there. So we're not quite there yet, but we'll continue to work there. But yes, that, that helps with those school improvements where they're really looking at what are the specific strategies that we're putting in place? And it's looking at strategies on, it could, looking at the curriculum as a whole, looking at the implementation of the curriculums or the taught curriculum, so the written curriculum or the taught curriculum, looking at the alignment of the instruction that's happening. And so one piece that our, we're working on and it's looking at those instructional practices and focusing on our focused teacher evaluation model, that really is not an evaluation piece as much as a piece of looking at the teaching and learning. And are we aligning, so if the standard is, is at a high level of analysis, are we making sure that the instruction that we're providing with our students is at that same high level and we're having students analyze the work that they're doing in that day-to-day class? Because that's how they'll be assessed on iLearn, at that higher level of that analysis. And so it's all those pieces, that school improvement pieces, they all tie together so that you're looking at the strategies that you're putting in place. And then where do you start? Because you can't do everything overnight. So what's, what's, where's the part that you start at and then where do you move forward? And, and make those incremental changes and how do you monitor that and tie back to, did that strategy work or not? And so, yes, I'd say, yes, we're seeing some improvement there, but again, that iRead is one measure. And then we also tie it into other measures and look at our, all of our student groups.
But the school improvement plans have a, a significant effect. Is that a true statement?
Yes, yeah.
Good.
Thank you. All right, Roger, top that.
Kind of get a little competition going here. Okay. I don't like following Amy. Hers is in color, finance people thinking black and white. But I'm, I may change because if you're going to grow, you got to change. So, let's see here. Amy, you going to make that work or do you want me to? I need a lot of help. Okay, we'll have it up here on the screen in just a second, but, so we're through September in this case. So on our fiscal year, we, we're just three months in. What you'll see here in a minute is, is that as always, our, our balances will, will decline because part of our revenue being the operating referendum, we're getting that primarily twice a year when people pay their taxes. So that's, that's the normal routine. You'll see here in a minute that we're a bit ahead of last year, which we would expect to be because a couple of things. One is, is, doesn't track exactly, but also over time, as our budget gets larger, then, you know, eight percent of the bigger number is, is more money, more dollars. And so, so we're about, I think about eight hundred and fifty thousand or so more this year in our, those three funds than we were last year. So we're, we're at six point three million dollars. This was also a three-pay month in September, so that brought it down quite a bit. And then as you can see, last year, we were at five point five almost. So pretty much tracking with, with what we would expect at this time of the year. In our operations fund, as I always note, it's harder to compare these funds because this has a number of non-personnel items in it, but those expenditures, expenditures are not, you know, as regular as payroll and, which is every two weeks, of course. And so, and now we, as is typical, we're, we're in a negative cash balance actually because this fund is, is primarily supported with property tax. And so we're spending the money all year, but receiving the revenue twice a year. And so, and you'll see from last year, you can track it from last year and that, that same pattern exists. And as we get closer to the end of the year, it'll, it'll reverse itself and start moving up toward a positive cash balance. And finally, our rainy day fund, there's not much to say about this. You can see it's, there's been no activity in this fund for several months, which is, you know, would be anticipated and, and, and then of course, with that transfer that you approved earlier, the balance here will go up a bit. And with that, I'll respond to questions in chat.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Greg?
Yeah, on the operations fund in twenty-three, the, the purchase services, looks like the year-to-date has spent all the budget that was there. But when I look at twenty-twenty-two, there was a lot more budget, like more than twice the budget for purchase services. Just wonder if you could talk to that a little bit?
Yeah, let's see. Maybe looking at the wrong one. So purchase services, so that is things like utilities, for example. And that wouldn't answer your question, but that's, that's a part of what's there. Again, I don't know off the top of my head, but I do know that our, our utilities went up considerably in, in twenty-three as compared to twenty-two, part of what we've talked about before in terms of inflation. And so there's, that's one example of purchase services, but just as a general statement, odds are in twenty-three, we're, we're, we're going to be, we're spending considerably more money for what otherwise would be something because of inflation primarily in twenty-three as compared to twenty-two. And that's happens more with purchase services because we're not in control of that. I mean, whatever they say they're going to charge for utilities, that's what we're going to pay. Whereas salary and benefits, we try to keep up with inflation, but, but, you know, that's a conscious decision on, on the board's part as to how much that, that can go up. Here, we're kind of at the mercy of wherever we're purchasing the services. So that, that's likely kind of a overall answer to.
Yeah, looking at twenty-two, year-to-date, we had spent about eight million and year-to-date now, we spent six million. So it almost seems like the, like the budget number wasn't, maybe it's not correct in the spreadsheet for twenty-three? It may be something you need to look at.
It, it is something I would have to look at. Again, in, in purchase services, it's, sometimes we'll have a situation where, where we are paying, we might pay eleven months because of the way we got, we received the billing in one year and then, which results in the next year paying thirteen months. So, so the, the expenses aren't as, as regular, you might say, in terms of, because we, if we get, receive a utility bill, for example, late in the, in, in December, one year, it might get paid in January and, and comparable would have been, it would have been, if it's for the month of November, it might have been paid in December the prior year. So now that, you can see how that kind of skews the, any kind of comparison that you make.
It just looks more like the, it's the budget cell is
It could be.
Spare, one's fifteen million and one's six million.
Right. Yeah, there's something else going on in there. I'd have to go back and see what it is, which I can do.
Anything else? All right, thank you, Roger. All right, Dr. B, top that.
Oh, I can't top tonight. There's too many, too many great things going on. But I will share that the greatest sport in the world, of course, is cross-country. And, and on Saturday, our boys' cross-country team won their second state championship in a row, which is really difficult to do. But even more impressive than that, it was the third greatest margin of victory in the history of cross-country state championships. So congratulations to the, the boys' cross-country team at Carmel High School, state champs again. Our girls' team placed seventh in the state as a team. They had another really good, good year and, and as an old cross-country guy, I, makes my heart full. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to go to meet this year, first one I've met, lost, I have not attended in a long, long time and, so, but I'm real happy for them. Also want to do, throw out just a little shout-out and some love to our boys' and girls' soccer teams. They had incredible seasons and both of them were, lost to Cathedral on the same day, on the same field in the, in the tournament. And, but wow, did they have a, you know, they, they played so well all year long and both of them were rated first in the, you know, ranked one in the state at some point in time or another. And just appreciate, you know, I always say it's easy to be a champion when you win, but even when it was, you know, they had to face some, the difficulties of, of loss. Along, same thing with our football team, they got knocked out by Westfield second year in a row, getting kind of tired of those rocks. But the, but, you know, it's in the struggle that I think there's some benefits to come out of, so really want to give a shout-out to them too. Our marching Greyhounds placed second in the state at the ISMA championship Saturday night. Once again, it was a real tight competition with Avon High School. And I can tell you, my observations over the last five years is there's a very, kind of a special relationship between the two programs and I would best describe it as a non-rivalry. And the reason why I say non-rivalry is because they pull for one another. They, Carmel's band kids pull for the Avon kids and the Avon kids pull for the, the Carmel kids. And if you've been there at the awards, at the end, as soon as they release the bands, you see Carmel and Avon just run and, and greet each other somewhere in their little field hug in each other. And in the past five years, it's either Avon or, or Carmel that's won the state. And then coming up, of course, is going to be the National Bands of America coming up. But it's a, it's really a fascinating relationship and I think both of those high-level marching bands just push each other to be better. And then coming up, of course, is going to be the National Bands of America coming up. But it's, it's really a fascinating relationship. And I think both of those high-level marching bands just push each other to be better. And, and they're happy for one another when they do that. And, and they love to watch each other perform. And it's just really, really special. So they've, it's my first ever non-rivalry with, with people, you know, with teams that are playing at the top. But, and their show this year is just crazy cool, like it is every year. But congratulations to them. I wanted to just highlight a couple of things that's happened here recently. First one is JA Career Ignite. It's a partnership with the Junior Achievement and the Carmel Education Foundation. It's another one of those really cool things that the foundation's gotten us connected in. And it's a great event. More than 60 companies were present, including Carmel Clay Schools. We were one of the, one of the folks in there. And on day one, students that enrolled in principals classes, which is like the beginning class for career technical education, that's when they, they go to attend this job spark with all these companies during their class time. And they, so they take these introductory classes for their career pathways. Then last Thursday, any student could attend during their SSRT time. And it was great to see the connections between industry professionals and students and kind of makes their education more real and start thinking about the future. So we're grateful for the great team at Junior Achievement and then, of course, for Carmel Education Foundation for putting on such a productive event in the high school. So it's so accessible to all the kids. So that was great. I wanted to do a shout out because it's been, I don't think we've had a board meeting since, but Friday on October 20th, we had our expedition first round. And I got great feedback from that. And really a great program for people in the community to get to know, a little bit of, a little bit of behind the curtain on, on how it goes and, and all, and all the different phases. And it was a fantastic day. And I just wanted to do a shout out to all y'all that presented on that. And, and we had two student panels, I believe, at the elementary and at the, was it at the elementary and at the high school? And whenever they get to see the students talk about their experience in schools, it's always a really, really good, good experience. Then, of course, last Friday was the Leadership Connection, which is a partnership with the Carmel Rotary. And Louise is like one of the most, one of the key players in the planning and organization of that event for the last, what, two, three years? And I want you to share a little bit about that.
Okay. Yeah, so Leadership Connection is a program that we do through the Carmel Rotary Club. And that partnership is with our high school and then a few different high schools in the Indianapolis community. I will tell you, we have two different program days. One is based on service, where the students volunteered to support for not-for-profits that service the community. I would list them, but I might forget them. But just know that one of them focuses on feeding the homeless, another providing materials for homeless, another is the Hamilton County Youth Assistance Program, and then another, I think, deals with drug addiction. So that was our, the students volunteer day. And then there's what we call Program Day, where we work on students developing their leadership skills. So this year, we had 140-plus students be a part of that. And of that split, 62 were from Carmel High School or the, and/or the Mayor's Youth Council. Then the other half came from Indy-based schools. And we had, I want to give a shout out to CJ Glander and Charred Reed. He, they are leaders at our high school that helped to be successful. Our sponsor, our primary sponsor was One America Downtown. They hosted the event for Program Day and offered up their auditorium and then their breakout rooms for our sessions and for our Lunch with a Leader. Lunch with a Leader is comprised of 26 business and community leaders coming together. They all are responsible for one specific table where we have five to six students sitting there and they get to ask that business leader, community leader, questions. At the, at the table I was at, we had the mayor of Noblesville present, answering questions for students. Then we also donated 2K, so this is 500 plus per student group. We had students do a presentation to the not-for-profit organization leaders on why people should buy in, volunteer, donate to their organization. We gave $500 per student group to those not-for-profits. And then we also have five scholarships that students can apply for, where there'll be a $2,000 stipend and an iPad given to these seniors that are selected. So I am just excited that Rotary and we partner with Danny Porte's organization to ensure that students are set up to be able to continue that education after they leave our high schools. The last thing that I'll tell you is just, we had breakouts where students got to learn more about three buckets. One was Leading Self, in which students identify their top values, developed their own personal mission and vision statement. Then we had a breakout that was about leading others, so teaching students how they can be more of a leaders, because a lot of students are already leaders, but even better leaders in the school with their peers. And then the last breakout was leading the community, so how they could be a leader in the community. And you should just be, you know, really, I don't know, excited about this partnership. We went from 100 students to now we're at 140. We'll likely grow next year, but it is a very key partnership with the community and I'm just honored to represent our team in this endeavor. So, thank you.
Thank you for sharing all that. I, I love this program because it started as an idea with some, some folks on the, from the Rotary Club. And it just keeps growing and growing. And I think Dr. O'Stryke was one of the Lunch with a Leader people. And, and I love that you're not, they're not only just hearing about leadership, but they're actually experiencing leadership and they're actually doing things. And, and I just love the way it's, how it's grown. And so, great job and appreciate you being a leader of the leaders. So, finally, is my bell ringer. And this is going to be a little personal tonight because my bell ringer for this evening is about gratitude. So if you hadn't heard, I had the personal misfortune of getting knocked off of my ladder by a rogue tree limb that resulted in a rupture to Achilles tendon, which required surgery, which I've already had. And I was just released this afternoon to come back to work, so I was glad to be here with you all. And my wife was really glad that I was out of the house. But what I'm so thankful for is just the number of people who've wished me well, either with, in person or, or with cards or, or an email or just, just such a warm support group. And, and the team especially coming through and, and trying to keep my spirits up high. And, and the timing couldn't have been worse, you know, with the referendum. I'm supposed to be running around and then doing all those things. And, but the Carmel Clay Schools team, there's three big, big, four big players right here in a row, took on my responsibilities to their already heavy loads to make sure that the district didn't miss a beat, which it did not. And our CCS family was completely covered. So I'm still the luckiest guy on the planet to get to work with this team and with our families and our students and really in this community. And so the good news is that I was able to get out and visit folks voting early about the referendum and how important their vote is, you know, for Carmel Clay Schools. The bad news is, is that I had to explain how I hurt my leg about three or four hundred times. And I'm not going to lie, after a while, I got bored telling about the limb and I started telling stories about hang gliding, you know, on the cliffs and, and maybe, maybe a skydive or two. But actually, some students suggested that I come up with a better story because getting knocked off by a limb is not really, you know, very exciting. So, but anyhow, I had to do that. And I usually started the conversation with, your superintendent is kind of a klutz. And then I ended it with, your superintendent has decided to retire from ladders. So with that, I will just say thank you to everybody who's been so kind to me and helped so much. And, and just, let's just keep her going. And that concludes my superintendent's report. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will tell you also that if you haven't seen the photo already of Dr. B at the polling place with your leg propped up on a pillow and your walker behind you talking to voters about the referendum, nothing will inspire you more. It definitely made it where, when I was standing outside in the cold on Saturday, I could not complain because you had done it the whole week before with your leg. So thank you so much for, for, even when you should, should be taking it easy, you definitely are still fighting for Carmel Clay Schools. So much appreciated. With that, I will now take a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor? Meeting adjourned. There's a lot of things.